says nine.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Wednesday, February the nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's nine o'clock AM. And see, Mr. Holiday, would you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have Pastor Rory Rogers with Calvary Chapel. Would you lead us in prayer, please?
Oh.
What does we get today is the Cook County Court convenes to make big decisions for the county, for the people, for property. Lot of riots on all of this. Lot of pressure on our judges. God, we pray that you would give them wisdom. They'd be able to help lead us without partiality and in righteousness. And we'd be a city set on a hill, frank, shining in Oregon. And we'll give you all the glory for all that takes place here today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. So we'll start with public comment. Adam, please. I need you to step up to the mic, please, and.
Sorry, Adam. You know.
He's wondering if you want to do it after the meeting.
Oh, if you want to waive it till after the meeting, that's fine. Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone else want to have public meeting or public comment first? How about online? Kate, we'll leave it. Go to consent agenda. Everybody has reviewed the consent agenda and entertain a motion.
I so so move.
My second that emotion, that emotion, not an emotion, emotion.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Herman, Herman, aye.
Seth, aye.
And Brian, aye. So we'll go to discussion. We have a fee waiver request for the two thousand and twenty-five Pee-wee rodeo and banquitted the Cook County Fairgrounds. And so we have the Central Oregon Pee-wee Association here. So if you all would like to step up and so we can see everyone, we've got a great crowd. Lot of young people. It's very fun to see this.
It's nice to look out and see a lot of cowboy hats. Hey. You're gonna have to talk right up to the mic with that soft voice. Okay.
I'm the two thousand and twenty-five Central Oregon Pee-wee Rodeo Queen, and my name is Hattie Keegan. I've competed in Pee-wee rodeo for many years, and I do barrels, poles, breakaway, and goats. And I just wanted to thank you guys and all the opportunities you guys have given us using the Prineville Fairgrounds for Pee-wee rodeo. I just want to thank you guys for letting us use it.
My name is Blakely Harwell, and my.
A little louder. Right up to the thing. Pick it up, honey, and put it right to your there. There you go.
My name is Blakely Harwell, and I'm the two thousand and twenty-five rope-a-little-mess. And this is my second year doing rodeo and and I thank you that I think you that you're that.
What event, what what events do you do, Ashley? Tell us that.
Barrel racing, pole bending, goat tying, and roping.
Well, you did very well at speaking here today, too. You got to add that. Thank you very much. Can we see your other contestants that are here? Maybe they can come up?
You can just get that out of the way.
Yeah, we don't need that.
Hi, I'm Ryan, and this is my second year doing rodeo.
What events do you do?
I do barrels, poles, and goat tying.
What's your favorite?
Walls, probably.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Hi, my name is Paisley Jennings, and this is gonna be my eighth year of doing Central Oregon Pee-wee Rodeo Association.
And I do barrel racing, pole bending, goat tying, and breakaway.
Well, very good, eight years. Good for you. Okay.
I'm CJ Neer, and I competed in the Crooked River Roundup twice through the Young Guns.
Well, congratulations. That's quite an achievement. I bet I saw you. Were you there last year? I bet. And what did you? You did barrels, right? I think I remember you. Hey.
My name's Wigan Nunnella, and my horse is named Midge, and I do barrels, poles, goat tying.
Very good. Thank you.
My name is my friends and dummy rapping. I do dummy rapping, barrels, and poles.
Good for you. Good for you, and you're a good speaker.
You are. Nice and loud.
Yes, yes. Okay.
My name's Riley Nunnella, and I do, um, my horse is named Polly, and I do barrel racing, pole bending, goat tying, breakaway, beam roping, and I just thank the county for letting us do the Young Guns.
Thank you very much. You did a good job.
Yeah, we thank you for participating, doing everything.
And my name's Craig Neer, and I'm the association president. And we just asked for the fees to be waived because of the opportunity that you can see it. It gives our contestants. We're a five-of-one, three-seat nonprofit, and we're a complete volunteer organization. So the opportunity that the Cook County Fairgrounds gets us allows us to be able to give back to, one, the community and also to the contestants. So we thank you for consideration.
Thank you very much. I want to thank all of you young contestants for coming here today. That means a lot to me, and you all did excellent on your speeches. And it's very hard to talk in front of people, we know. And I just want to thank you and how well you did today. I really thank you for coming.
Yeah, I totally agree.
And I love all your hats. Great job.
I wish every time we had Board of Commissioners, we had a lot of cowboy hats in the audience. Makes it a lot more friendly out there.
So I'd make a motion to approve the funds for the Pee-wee rodeo.
And I will very happily second that motion.
So we've had a motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Are there no discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Herman, aye.
Seth, aye.
Brian, aye. Well, thank you very much. We have a fund that we'll take that out of as the community fund to reimburse the fairgrounds. So thanks again for coming in.
Yeah. Thank you very, very much for coming. There's not gonna be any. There's only gonna be one cowboy hat. Steve left. He's gonna feel alone. Adam, do you have your hat with you? Okay, well, Steve's got somebody. Okay, he's got somebody with him there. Okay.
So our next is an update and feedback request on the Blueprint South 500 KV Transmission Line Project crossing Cook County.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Derek Vowles. I'm with Power Engineers. I'm here on behalf of Pacific Power. John and L, our project manager, was unable to make it today, but thank you for the opportunity to give the Commissioners a briefing. We were back, we were here in March of last year to introduce the project, to kind of tell a little bit about what was being planned over the last year or so. So this is 500 kilovolt transmission line project that is being planned over the past year. We've formed a community, two community working groups, one in the in the Prineville Bend area, another one down in Clamath Falls area. And over this time, we've identified a few route alternatives for the transmission project, and we have some upcoming open houses planned. And just want to give the Commissioners a briefing on that. Next slide, please. So I'll just go through, just as a background a little bit. This is the Pacific Power Service territory. Basically, part of Pacific Power is part of Pacific Core Berkshire Hathaway Energy Company, serves Washington, Oregon, and Northern California. And there's over, over two hundred and forty communities that Pacific Power serves. Next slide. This summarizes the the need for the project. The primary item is reinforcing the backbone transmission system, the 500 kilovolt system, but also providing increased reliability and also meeting the compliance for reliability for transmission lines. And as the 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 demand for electricity has increased and involved, also provides access for third-party network customers and and also to provide some operational flexibility for the grid. But next slide, please. This, again, we shared this with you a year ago. This is the study area that we were looking at, and you can see we cast a pretty wide net. And the reason for that is we wanted to find as many opportunities to parallel where there's existing infrastructure. That's roads and transmission lines to make it less disruptive for the community. But what the goal is to connect a new line starting in near the Redmond Airport. So this is identified on the map here as full circle. This can be a new substation. We'll be connecting into a new substation in the Chiliquin area. And then the final connection is in the Snow Goose, the existing Snow Goose Substation in Clamath Falls. And the other thing in the study here, you can see is the green areas. This is the Forest Service land. The yellow is BLM land, and then the white is private land. So just kind of give you a little bit of a, you know, refresher, just kind of landscape. Next slide, please. This levels of voltage, you know, the what we're talking about is some of the highest voltage that you see for transmission lines, 500. And just for comparison, the voltage that you see along the streets, that's typically, that's your distribution voltage, the twelve to fifteen. It can go up to thirty-five, and then what you see in your house, this is the one-ten, two-twenty voltage. And next slide, please. This is, this is a look at just kind of where and from generation to the end user that we're talking about here. And so it's the blue shaded areas. So what we're talking about is the highest substations connecting between two higher voltage substations. We're not, this, this project is not about necessarily tapping into lower voltages, but it's moving a larger bulk of power between kind of Central Oregon and South Central Oregon. Next slide. So this is, again, just a reminder of the type of structures. I mean, here in Prineville, you guys, there's quite a few because there's a major corridor of these structures going through the, on the left, this is a steel lattice tower is what is being proposed. And on the right is the, this is the, the, the type of substation that is proposed in Chiliquin. So this is a 500 kilovolt substation. This is, this is actually the Snow Goose Substation down in Clamath Falls. It's about a forty, fifty acre footprint, so it's pretty large. Uh, next slide. This has some details just on the height of the structure, span, and so forth. So what we're, these, these structures themselves are just, just under two hundred feet tall. And it'll kind of range depending on the topography. The, the total length of the line is about a hundred and eighty miles, depending on the route that is proposed. We, the, the span between structures varies a little bit by what, what we're trying to engineer around, but typically anywhere from eight hundred to, you know, fourteen hundred feet, and we're looking at a two hundred and fifty foot right away. Next slide, please. This shows the, the approach that we're taking with our study. So we've got a technical kind of routing piece, which is the, the green, and then the, the blue is the public involvement. So we're doing that in parallel. So we're, we're pulling information on different resources, whether it's biological or community where people's homes are, roads, and so forth. And, and we're, we're meeting with the public. We're, we, like, as I mentioned, we've formed a couple of community working groups that has ten to twelve members, you know, on that. And we've met three times. We're gonna meet one more time after our public open houses. But it's been an opportunity to have an iterative process as we do our routing to get some feedback by the local community. Uh, next slide. So our, our general process, I mean, we, we look at where there's opportunities as a place to, to start all the different route links as basically the spider web of places we could potentially route the, the transmission line. So we're, we're really looking for where there's exist, as I mentioned before, where there is existing infrastructure that's been built, transmission lines, roads, pipelines, rail lines. Uh, next slide. And then on the constraint side, plenty of constraints in today's day and age where we've got built-up land and different regulations. And so we're, we're looking at where, where there's people's homes, where there's different protected land, whether it's on the visual side or protected species. Look, we're looking at schools. We're looking at, you know, a whole variety of different factors. Uh, next slide. So these are some of the, the specific types of studies that go into the routing. So we're looking at land use, visual, cultural, biological, water, surface water, geological. The geological in particular is important for the substation where we're actually building that down in Chiliquin. And then environmental justice. And so we, we're, we're looking at largely publicly available data that we can kind of pull and map. And then we follow that up with visits to the site. We've flown the different routes. Next slide. These are some of the engineering considerations, total length of line, you know, what we're paralleling, the different topography, how accessible the lines are, is it constructable? If it took the substation where there's floodplains, we don't work with the substation where it's standard water. Next slide. This is a look at all the different factors that go into routing. There's, there's, there's quite a few. It just, just kind of, when, when we, when we start the, the planning process, it's really about the, the system planning. So we're looking at where, where the need is, and then we go into the different engineering factors, several, you know, on the biological side, community factors, looking at, so, so pretty extensive. We, we look at, we look at all those things, you know, comprehensively to go into the routing process. Next slide. All right. So this is, this is where we're at. This is where, these are the route alternatives that we've identified. You can see, we, we kind of, if you, if you break it kind of down between Redmond down to Chiliquin, we've got four major corridors with, with six different variations of those corridors between Bend, Redmond and Prineville area, and then further south between Chiliquin and Clamath Falls, we've got three quarters with, with four different variations there. And what you'll see, I'll, I'll just kind of point out, up, up here closer to Prineville, the, the furthest right route that you'll see, this, just to, just to kind of orientate you with, with the area here. This, this parallels the, there's, there's a court, there's a West White Energy Quarter, there's three 500 kilovolt transmission lines. So this, that, that is the easternmost route closer to Prineville. So that's just to kind of give you an idea of where, where we're situated. And then there's, there's other route alternatives that are closer to Redmond and Bend. But at most of these routes are paralleling some type of existing transmission line or, or infrastructure just to kind of minimize the impact on the community. Uh, next slide. This is a recap. Talked about a few of these things of, of some of the public outreach and engagement that has been occurring. We've generated fact sheets, frequently asked questions. We, we've briefed all the county commissioners, you know, along the study area. We've, we formed our community working groups and, and, and the bigger thing, we, we've got our public open houses that are the first round that is scheduled, the, the second week of March. I've got another slide. So let's go to the next slide. Okay, before that, so this is our schedule. We're, the, the routing phase is kind of coming to an end as, as we're incorporating public comments. We'll be moving into permitting. And that will go about, tentatively about three years. Land acquisition will be occurring on the, the, on the back end of that, and it's about a three-year construction. And then with any luck, we'll be in service by 2032. Next slide. This is the, oh, I think, is there, you go up. Oh, you know, I don't, I don't, we must not have had the slide added to the version here. So the, I would, the, the slide that's missing there is the schedule of the open houses. And so the, the open house that is in, that will be here in Prineville will be on Monday, March tenth, in the evening from five to seven. And that's, and that last slide was the contact information for, for John and L.
Where, where is the meeting gonna be? I don't think you said that.
Yeah, and, and I apologize. I was, I was, it had the location. I, I, I'm spacing off the top of my head of where, where that specific location is.
Yeah, it'd be nice to do some type of that.
We, so we, what the, we, we are doing mailers to, to everybody within half mile of the route center line. And so it's a pretty extensive mailing list. We've got about four, four thousand landowners that are being contacted. And so that's, that's a primary way that we're notifying the community.
That's just in Cook County? There's four thousand?
No, that's the, that's the entire study area. Yeah.
So Derek, this project is just between, is all within this area that you have marked out?
Correct.
And not going any further. Where? It's a great transmission line system. What? Are you bringing in more power? Or are you just moving around what we have already?
Yeah, well, so, so it's, it's a combination. So this, this project does not generate any power, but it's, it's, it's allowing us to move the, the, the power we have and the new power that's being generated around. The other question?
I don't have any other questions.
Great. Well, thank you for coming in and showing us your presentation.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
I think, I think we're kind of excited for it because we have a lot of people that are wanting power and.
Much needed.
Yes. We'd like to see that date moved up a little bit, but thank you.
Good morning. My turn.
Yes, good morning.
Jody Barum with Oregon Living with Fire, and online we have Dr. Jennifer Fenton, our other co-coordinator. And I have for you some little goodies. We brought, I brought hard copies of our annual report, and then I also have these handy five-foot tape measures for you because we know the first five feet of defensible space is the most important when it comes to your home. Um, so I'll hand those out when I'm done. But just wanted to thank you for your time and investment in Oregon Living with Fire. I know our name says Oregon, but we're really Central Oregon. So we cover Crook, Deschutes, Jefferson, and the northern part of Clamath County. And what we do is bring together stakeholders to tie local implementation actions to a national wildland strategy for creating resilient landscapes, fire-adapted communities, and a safe, effective wildfire response. So what we've been working on over the past year that is in our little booklet for our annual report is really reaching out to the communities here in Central Oregon on, on how to, how to become more fire-adapted. We've gone for grant opportunities, and I'll let Dr. Fenton talk about that because that's really her area of expertise. We've held a wildfire preparedness fairs, and we're planning more for this coming spring, working with Amber Blanchard at Cook County Fire to set those up and do some educational classes on wildfire home protection strategies, what residents can do to assess their own properties to prepare for wildfire because we know Cook County has seen its fair share, and we want the residents to be prepared for it as best they can be. For our local planning purposes, we helped support the Cook County Community Wildfire Protection Plan process this past year. So thank you for your support of that, you know, mapping some of those infrastructure improvements, those potential areas where the wildland urban interface is where the natural environment meets the built environment. So what we're here today is just to check in with you, make sure we're on track with some of your priorities. Tim DeBoot from your Natural Resources Department represents you on our steering committee, and he's recognized on the back page of our annual report. And we just want to thank you for allowing him to contribute time to what we do. We attend his Natural Resources Advisory Committee meetings. We help participate and offer input there and work with the Ocho Co. Forest Restoration Collaborative as well with some of the efforts they have underway. Really working closely with primarily Shane Jeffries, who's also on our steering committee. I know he's accepted a new position at the region, and so we want to continue working with the Ocho Co. and with their outreach and prevention teams on what's going on, on their landscape to help create more resilient landscapes. So that's just a broad overview of a little bit of what we've been up to. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jennifer Fenton, who's joining us from Clamath Falls, and have her share a little bit more of what she's been up to this past year as well. Jen?
Morning, everyone. I hope you guys are staying warm over there. I just want to let you guys know, the CWDG grant, which is the Community Welfare Defense Grant, is still open until March fifteenth. They do prioritize a lot of projects that are either CWDG or CWPP, I'm sorry, Community Welfare Protection plans or items that have been identified in those plans. I understand that a lot of the time they prioritize projects that are in high social vulnerability areas. I know that Cook County doesn't technically qualify as socially vulnerable, but we all understand that there are pockets of social vulnerability. And so there are ways to explain that and ultimately get the cost match waived if, if need be. Other than that, you guys are obviously aware that the administration has paused a lot of funding opportunities. I, it's really unfortunate. I'm hoping they open up some more, and I would love to see Cook County get more of that funding. I've, especially for like CWDG or any, any other things that open up down the, down the road. I've been working on some different blog postings and things of that nature to explain community welfare defense, a defensible space, burning, those kinds of things to kind of get things moving. We do have something on our website to help focus some grant opportunities. So if you guys have anything that comes up, you can go ahead and fill out that form. It comes directly to me. And then we can try and see if we can identify any available funding. But other than that, just coming off maternity leave, so I should be at your disposal here pretty, you know, more, more frequently. But I'm happy to work with you guys however it is needed.
Great. Thanks, Jen. And on that note, I will also share that because of some of the federal funding freeze, your contribution to our program every year matters. The matching funds that you provide for our reimbursement grants go a long way. The reimbursement has been held up right now, but we're. The reimbursement has been held up right now, but we're hopeful that that will come through later this spring or as things get ironed out at the federal level. So we've spent some of the dollars and then we send in requests for reimbursement for up to 90,000 annually on our budget. So until the freeze gets fixed, we'll just operate with what we have. So working within our budget, we have plenty in reserves to operate for another year, even without federal funding. So we're doing just fine there. And then also working with a new entity that's starting the Central Oregon Prescribed Burn Cooperative. So it's a prescribed burn association trying to help private landowners learn to burn on their properties and be comfortable using fire for pile burning or for smaller acreages that might be interested. So if you know of anyone that's interested in applying fire on their lands, let us know and we'll connect them with those folks as well. Just really trying to be that convener and help landowners in the area be able to treat their properties to prepare for wildfire. And that's about all we had. I've got copies of our program of work, our annual report. Like I said, your five-foot tape measures and then Jen's and my business cards. I will also let you know my last name will be changing on April 12th because I'm getting married. So I'll have new business cards for you this spring after that. Any questions?
I guess I'm, congratulations on your upcoming actual, and thank you very much for your presentation. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yes, congratulations and congratulations, Jennifer, on your new one. Exciting. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right, well, I will just hand these over. And then be on our way and let you look at them at your leisure. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
Managers report.
Can we do that at the end?
At the end.
Morning Commissioners. The Pee Wee rodeo contestants inspired me to do better with my microphone work, so I'm going to try really hard to keep this close to my face.
The heater has turned off, which is really helpful for me.
But they did good. I have a few updates for you. First off, I wanted to note that Tom Evans, the county veteran service officer recently earned his accreditation from the Oregon Department of Veterans Affairs. Katie Plum mentioned that the study guide for that is thousands of pages long, so I want to thank him for his efforts on behalf of the county and the veterans in our community for getting that accreditation completed. I also wanted to note with the recent weather, the road department has been busy over the four storms we perceived this winter. They've covered approximately 1,500 miles with sand and plowing. They placed over or almost 1,100 yards of cinders. And put in countless hours to keep our roads clear and safe during the recent weather events. I also wanted to note here quickly that we do have a few open board positions that Sarah has posted. The deadline for submitting applications is Monday, February 24th. Those open boards and committees include the Ag Extension Service District, Community Health Advisory Council, Flat Rock Road District, Haylen Special Road District, Museum Advisory Board, Prineville Lake Acres Unit One Road District, and the Wolf Depredation Compensation Committee. So if anybody listening online knows anybody or is interested themselves, we encourage you to apply by 5:00 PM on Right. Thank you very much, Sarah. Moving on to some legislative matters I wanted to bring to your attention. There are a couple of bills relating to county obligations in relation to labor organizations. One of them is Senate Bill 754, and the initial version, when I, when I kind of put my notes together for this, the initial version included civil penalties for counties failing to reply within a certain amount of time. That civil penalty portion of the bill has been eliminated with a recent amendment, but there are still potentials for fines for counties who fail to timely respond. I believe we do a good job as a county in terms of being responsive, and I believe this adds some additional potential liability for the county. So AOC has asked county administrators, managers to provide some feedback. I'm going to further request by feedback on behalf of Crook County. There's another similar bill, House Bill 2944. And it similarly creates some potential civil liability for a public employer willing to provide timely responses to labor organizations. I believe this is the one you brought to my attention, Eric, and we have we will likely come back to the board asking for a letter of support in opposition for some of the concerns related to that. So you a heads up on those two pending, pending bills. Moving on, I wanted to last vastly touch on a major project we're kicking off. The Planning Department, it had a kickoff meeting with Parametrics last week for the Transportation Safety Action Plan. The meeting, the kickoff meeting was with the Parametrics team. This is a project that's being funded by the federal government. We are expecting funding to still be available through spring of 2026 on this project. At this time, the project team is collecting data to identify the high-risk areas and high-injury transportation networks in our system. The goal is to build off the transportation system plan and find the highest impact locations to focus projects on to reduce or eliminate traffic fatalities in Crook County. The, the project team is looking to come to the BOC or the board and do a presentation later this spring, probably in late April. So there'll be more of an update at that time, but that project has kicked off. I think it works timing-wise very nicely with the, kind of the wrapping up of the transportation system plan update. And we move into a more focused look at the real significant safety concerns within our transportation network. That's all I have for my update this morning. Any questions on any of that?
Thanks for bringing those bills up to us and getting ahead of it. Seems like a lot of time we're just receiving a lot of information, not necessarily from you late, but from, from other areas. And we're always hassling to, you know, to get a letter out. So it's great to have advancement on it. It's perfect. And thank the road department for a great job done during all that bad weather.
I think Pee Wee Rodeo was very good for you. You upped your manager's report and I approve. So I gave the kids encouragement. This is my encouragement to you, Will. Good job.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Perfect. I only had to turn my hearing aids up one notch, so, hey, thank you.
I actually need to put Seth with the younger ears on this side with the heaters, so I don't have
Maybe I could block the heater noise from you as I was
I don't, no, I'm thinking you have younger ears than I do, but anyway.
Is that a fat joke?
No. No, no, no. Let's not get discrimination going. I was talking younger. But good job, Will.
Commissioner updates.
Well, as of this morning, if you don't live in the eastern part of the county, you probably don't care about grasshoppers, but out in the Palina area, we really do. We've had them for about three years. Last year, they carpeted the ground. They don't tend to want to get into irrigated ground. They tend to do our native grasses. So I set up a meeting on March 18th at noon at the Palina Palma Club. And we will have the ranchers come and I'll be there and we're going to be discussing how to get rid of grasshoppers. So if that's of interest to you, March 18th at noon.
Great. Yeah, we had the opportunity to push the Eastern Oregon Counties Associations letter forward that Crook County actually took the lead on to get that going. And so I was able to be part of the Senate Republicans and the House Republicans press conference on Monday. So that was pretty cool. And then we're going to be sending ours out today as well as the actual letter will be being sent out by Eastern Oregon Counties Association. So we need to make sure to sign that. I talked to John about we got some notifications for, we got a notification for property that the county owns that is in the high. I think we should appeal that as well. I think the more people we can get to appeal their properties to make sure that the state understands that people are not comfortable with these new rules and they're not okay with the way that there was no ground truthing. Or, you know, even when Will and I brought up specific issues with multiple lots next to each other, they were unwilling to come down and, and look at the actual on boots on the ground and explain to us why that was. They just kind of glossed over it. And so I, I think that's just shows to me that they did not do a a good enough job researching this information before they put it out onto our, our citizens. So excuse me. Yeah, I would really like it if the county would, would appeal that. If you guys are okay, I'll work with John to do that between now and I, I think we have, what, two more meetings before the 10th? But I think it would be good to get it in sooner than later. So if you guys are okay with that, I don't know if, if Eric, do you think we need to vote to agree to appeal that or?
Yeah. What it sounds like you're saying what it sounds like you're saying is you're interested in having a, the Board of Commissioners delegate authority to you and John to prepare and issue an appeal on, if I understand, the wildlife, excuse me, wildfire mapping designation for county-owned properties.
Yes. So
So moved.
Second.
Well, this has been made in secondhand discussion.
No.
I have one thing. They say that this isn't going to affect insurance or any of that, which I have had so many people and myself where your insurance is either in a year, my insurance will be dropped on my house in Palina. And that's it. And I've had people that have come, in fact, someone just came to me yesterday that's right on the outskirts of the county line by Redmond. And again, it's, it's sad because that reality wasn't supposed to be, but it's there. So we're all being affected, no matter where we live, by insurance rates.
And so from what I've been hearing in Salem, and when I talked to the governor about it, she said, you need to turn that, there's an insurance agency
Yes.
in the state, you need to turn that into it. But what I'm hearing from people on the ground is that their insurance is not, is not reflecting the map. They're reflecting the four different aspects of the map that made the map
Yes.
to do it. And so as we all know, insurance companies are very slippery. And they're going to find every possible way they can around the law to get the average guy. So I, 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 if you hear anybody that has that, I would send them there, but
Again.
I'm sure they've found a loophole and yeah.
It's a problem.
So yeah, so yeah, okay. Thank you guys for that. And then the other, the
We were still on discussion, kind of, but do you have a discussion point on this? Okay.
Any more just further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Hermerick, aye.
Seth, aye.
Barney, aye. So
Commissioner Crawford, I, I apologize if you mentioned this, but earlier this week, the governor issued an order that that paused the processing of appeals. So this is kind of, it's, it's been a little bit confusing in terms of what that means. And I want to make sure that the public who might be listening or might hear about that order, understand that it's still critical to file the appeal by that March 7th or March 10th deadline. All it does is stop, once those appeals are filed, it, as I understand it, it only stops the processing of those appeals until the conclusion of the legislative session. So it's still really important to file an appeal.
Yeah, thank you, Will. Yeah, it doesn't change the date of the appeal in, you know, the or how would you say that? It doesn't change the last day that you can appeal. It just expands the time for the appeal process. Yep. The other one I have is the 777, the Wolf Bill will be heard on February 27th, and I plan on being there to testify, probably not there, but I'll probably do it online. And that's the funding of the Wolf funds to ensure that we take care of people that lose animals as well as provide funds for non-lethal ways to stop the wolves from killing animals.
And we've already sent a letter from Crook County in support of that. So we did that, I think, last week, but that's already went out.
Great.
I had one more thing real quick. I wanted to commend the city of Prineville for their public meeting ethics training that we all went to, and we've all received our certificates, which we're very proud of. A lot of our board members went to it. It was a very, very good, very good meeting, a lot of education there. And I just want to thank them for putting that together. We all three attended and just a thank you to the city of Prineville.
Yes, it was a large attendance for
Very large.
all through the community. Any further?
I'm good.
So we'll go into public comment. Adam?
Adam McCoskey, 3993 Northwest to Hancik. Just one comment. Looks like you got a dress code for John. Just needs a tie. Anyway. I kind of sound like a broken record, but I wanted to discuss this because I thought we were going to get maybe some update on the water issues with, with Knife River and and the community over there. But for me, I just wanted to share something that maybe I learned from all of this. I could have lived without learning it, but now that I know, I know, but I need to start reading more things of what's out there and then start realize some stuff I missed or whatever. And I think for the, I'm not trying to tell the county how to do their work. But I think that it would be really good if we provide testimony and all these hearings and the CUP and all that. But I really don't know, even myself, reading some material that I probably skipped over that was maybe pretty valuable when you do in these hearings or whatever. So I just wanted to bring forward something that I discovered while doing compliance reports, because there's a lot of them going into the county right now about the mining project that's over there, maybe for the future one. And it all goes with the CUP about de-watering, goes back to the fines that were placed on Knife River for doing the de-watering after they self-reported, when they were reported dogammy, so they self-reported. What I didn't realize on the thing there is when they showed a map of what they did, all the water that drained from the ponds and the processing site drained into that mining pond that they were working and they, they de-watered. I didn't even realize that's what was happening. And then they pumped it out to the stream and then went down the road or, you know, down to the neighbors. Also, that doesn't mean that the chemicals or everything that went into that pond actually exited and went down through the stream. That, that stuff's still probably in there. So what I wanted to read, I've got an excerpt here that was really interesting from the fines and how they, it was very interesting to find out how they actually came up with the fine. They have this formula. Then they have these little parts in there that says MP or whatever, they fill that in there. And, and if you read those, and I didn't read them, but until now. But they make comments into this thing about respondent has hundreds of class one and class one equivalent violations as described in the certain case. So that's one right there. That's a P. When you go to O, because there were seven to 28 occurrences of the violation, respondent discharged for three days per month during the month. So it kind of describes all the things that they're doing. But I think the one that actually is really, really important. And I think when you have a company come in, you know, a billion-dollar company comes in and they're, you know, either all across the country or just in our state or just in our county. all across the country or just in our state or just in our county, they're out here making money, but they're also not following what they're supposed to be doing. It says in here on M, it says because respondent's conduct was reckless, responded as a holder of various discharge permits throughout the state and has been issued multiple enforcement actions for permit and discharge violations. So they take that all into account when they do a fine on them. But when we go in and, and talk in front of the, uh, when you, when you, uh, ha- have somebody, you know, in planning come in with a mine or something like that. I don't know, you know, it was deja vu for me because I actually went back and, and Karen went back and looked at the, uh, hearing, uh, what was said there and stuff. And all this stuff was brought forward, but I don't think anything ever got checked. In fact, I missed some of these things too, that I maybe I should have brought forward. So I think it's really important when we sit down and, and look at whether that's a CUP or a different CUP. Where's the knowledge before we make the decision? Because we're making the decision on some information that I'm giving, maybe the, the company that's putting in for the permit or whatever. You know, we're not miners. I'm not a miner. Most probably people here aren't miners. So how do you make a CUP? Cause what I'm really concerned about is veneers. I'd say this CUP, which was violated multiple times because you're going to, you're going to see those. Uh, veneers, I don't think is as stringent a CUP as this one right here. And I think the, the testimony we had on Woodward and all the violations that they did should have been really considered when the CUP for veneer was actually getting made. And it's not completed yet because of the water thing. So I just wanted to say that, put it on record. I'm not blaming anybody, whatever, but I learned a lot of things, things I should have done and, uh, maybe in the future when we move forward in the future. And hopefully I don't have to come to a bunch of these meetings in the future and all CUPs, but maybe I will. Uh, and, and help out as much as I can, but, uh, I'd be willing to help. I, I'm just kidding, but I'll be willing to help since I'm retired. I'll sit down and write a plan with you, John. On how, because the CUP is like Jerry Seinfeld did a thing one, I'll be done here in a second. Jerry Seinfeld did a deal about getting a reservation at an airport for a car. He gets there to the car to get it and the lady says, we don't have any cars. So he says, she, he tells her she doesn't understand what a reservation is. She goes, yes, I do. He says, no, you got the first part of the reservation right, but the important part is you gotta have a car. So I think it's for us in the CUP is like, the important thing is, okay, we'll come up with the CUP. But the important thing is to actually follow the CUP and whatever that's going to be, whether we inspect it. Somebody comes out and expects it rather than waiting on compliance issues that the neighbors bring up and find three years later. Uh, anyway, just food for thought.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you so much.
We'd love to have you on the planning commission. So on a position open.
Actually, I've been thinking about. Shoot me for that because I shouldn't be doing that.
I think you would, I really enjoyed my time. I think you would really enjoy it. So I, I, I want you to think about putting an application when there's an opening.
Well, you'll have to let me know because I don't spend that much time looking for work. So if you let me know if there's any.
Okay, we'll call you.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Adam. Any other comments? Online, any comments?
We have a couple here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Oh, that's probably location.
I was just banking on that the slide was there. So the, the Kerry, um, Kerry Foster Hall. At the fairgrounds and, and so it's Monday, March tenth from five to seven at Kerry Foster.
Perfect.
And, um, also, uh, I, I should have pointed out a couple of the, the county members on our community working group. And so Russ, uh, Deboot, uh, from, uh, Fire and Rescue, uh, Steve Waring, um, from County Parks and it, and also Will was, um, initially before he had his, um, his job changes. So one of thanks. Oh, okay. We'll, we'll talk after.
Yeah.
Anyways, thank you for your time. Just want to give those additional updates.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you.
Any, uh?
Morning commissioners, uh, for the record, Justin Alderman, managing editor of the Primeville Review. Um, as you're well aware, we've, uh, come before the commission on, uh, multiple occasions related to initial public records requests and uh, that re- and as part of that request, a request for, um, a, uh, reasonable fee waiver uh, in accordance with, uh, uh, Oregon's public records law, uh, due to the public interest and benefit. Um, uh, the information would provide, um, except for, uh, requests which, um, met a de minimis, uh, standard already established by, um, the county. Uh, our requests have been completely denied on, uh, items related to, uh, records with the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, uh, which seek, uh, to further understand, uh, the committee's failure to comply as self-admitted. Uh, in its response to a public meetings grievance with Oregon's public meetings laws, especially in meetings related to a matter of public interest of the federal government's potential purchase of private land in the Ochcos. Uh, we have done a additional records request, uh, seeking emails related to a member of that committee, Mr. Cliff Kaiser, who our understanding had, uh, was rumored to have, um, rescinded his application for renewal. Um, as his term expired at the end of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we uncovered that Mr. Kaiser through federal records had maintained business dealings with the United States Forest Service and had not disclosed those contracts and potential conflicts of interest during his service on the N-Rac. We then provided a records request directly with Mr. Kaiser as a public body because we had uncovered that Mr. Kaiser maintained, um, official, um, emails in his role on the N-Rac in a company email account, the same email account, which is also listed on federal records. Your county council then engaged on Mr. Kaiser's behalf, um, and has, uh, now requested additional fees, uh, to produce those records. Now, if you remember from our original request, uh, the county provided us a copy of a resolution signed by the county commissioners that directed county council to establish a program for records retention. We think this is extremely relevant because it does potentially signal on how county officials are going about retaining records. Uh, which is questionable in this case because Mr. Kaiser has apparently used, uh, his company email, uh, to, uh, conduct can, uh, official county business on behalf of the N-Rac. We did re-follow up asking for those additional documents and believe that the resolution provided was a bit insufficient. Mr. Blaine, um, responded indicating that he thought it was, but that the county would then further respond and provide those additional documents. Now, I would assume that documents of some sort of established program would be pretty easy. You'd think it would be like an employee handbook, uh, whatever the re- record retention schedule is. But it seems the county is intent on indicating that the estimated timelines are always to the maximum fifteen day deadline under the Oregon Public, uh, Records Law. To clarify, the records law indicates that the county needs to respond in a time reasonable, not to exceed. That does not necessarily provide a public body to always wait until the maximum timeline. If you are not aware, we have requested facilitated dispute resolution, um, with the Oregon Public Records Advocate. But that would be an informal process as that process only covers state agencies and to a limited extent, uh, formally, uh, cities in the state of Oregon. It does not apply to counties and special districts. Um, we were informed that, uh, the county would agree, uh, to an extent. However, while we will continue to proceed with that, um, we will obviously continue to make our appeals directly to the commission of the county, uh, because we believe further delay is, um, is, is not reasonable and the public is entitled to this information. Also, in moving forward with this facilitated dispute resolution, we believe having at least the record retention schedule, um, and a program, uh, documents and how that, uh, record retention program actually functions within the county is an important piece to understand, uh, the county's potential reasonings, uh, related to its, uh, denial of fee, uh, waiver request. On this new request though, we have now been requested to provide five hours of, uh, Mr. Blaine indicated five hours of staff time will be required to process your request. That is two, uh, three hundred and seventy additional dollars now for the completion. The two, it says, uh, two hours of staff time and three hours of legal counsel time. So, and, um, so I'm again appealing to the, uh, commission to, uh, consider a reasonable fee waiver under the circumstances. The primary review is a general interest news publication in Primeville, which provides publication free of charge to the members, uh, of the public. Uh, additionally, we have been involved in breaking, uh, significant news stories within Crook County, um, on a, a regular basis since our start, uh, in, uh, the early summer of twenty, uh, twenty-four. As is, um, excuse me, I'm going to bring up my other notes here. It was well established, uh, in, uh, by the Oregon Attorney General and in a couple of different, uh, cases, including, uh, defensive animals, VOHSU in twenty twenty-five. Um, that, um, uh, a court ruling held that agencies must provide a reasoned explanation as well for why a request is out of the public interest. That same case as well went on, uh, to indicate that the public records law in Oregon is designed to promote transparency and fees should not be used as a detriment to that, uh, purpose. I'm greatly concerned, uh, from comments from the commission, um, in particular, Commissioner, uh, Hermrick, uh, during the last, um, meeting in which we, uh, brought this issue to bear, um, that the fees were indeed, uh, not waiving the fees, were indeed to, um, prevent the Primeville or, or, uh, deter the Primeville Review from reporting, um, on the, uh, operations of, uh, county public bodies when it comes to compliance with the meetings law and a fear that it would, uh, further reduce potential volunteers for these public bodies. Uh, I, I can't think of a statement that would further make clear that it is intended to be a detriment. Uh, our interest is seek truth and provide transparency to the public. That is a fundamental role for the news media within our democracy. Regardless of where those facts, uh, at the end of the day lie. Uh, and we will can remain steadfast and committed, uh, to that purpose. So again, I appealed to the commissioners, uh, to consider, uh, a, um, uh, fee waiver or in lieu, a significant reduction of fees. Um, further outlined, the Oregon Attorney General, uh, gave an example that investigative reporters with established credentials who saw records concerning military aviation safety with the intent on reporting on those records were able to satisfy the public interest standard by demonstrating that fee requirements inhibited their ability to obtain government records. Oregon Attorney General's Public Meetings Manual, also see Badwire versus US Department of the Air Force. Uh, that is a federal case, um, which is referenced by the attorney general because federal records law is, uh, frequently, uh, cited as precedent for Oregon's public records law as well. Um, I appreciate your time. Uh, additionally, we would hope that you might, uh, inquire as you received an email from us on this matter uh, of, um, hopefully avoiding any further delay and getting those additional documents related to the public records retention program for the county. And we believe if we're going to move forward in good faith with the facilitated dispute resolution, that those documents be provided before the end of this week. Uh, we have responded to the public records advocate indicating, uh, that we are available, um, on Monday. Um, that was a date that the records advocate. I'm not sure if, uh, Mr. Blaine and the county council will, um, also, uh, respond and indicate that that date would work for them. Um, but, um, our hope is to get that. Otherwise, uh, we are fully prepared to continue with the existing, um, uh, process of seeking a petition with the district attorney's office. Again, I appreciate your time. Our interest is to continue to be able to serve the citizens of Crook County, uh, with our reporting. And this is, uh, again, also to address the overall issue of these public records issues. There are many other issues, some of which have been brought before you by citizens today in public comment, which we, uh, are already looking into, uh, and getting through this process on this particular story in, in interest of, of, uh, public interest is important so we can move on to other stories of significant public interest as well. I will mention, uh, an ending real quick. We've also determined too, that in considering fee waivers, that the county appears to be charging an excessive amount on its fees. Just to give one example, uh, the county charges a hundred and sixty-five dollars for legal counsel review, which turns out to about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars annually. Our understanding is, uh, county council maybe on average makes just under half that in its salary. While that doesn't factor in, you know, potential benefits, um, packages for those employees. I can't imagine that, that, that would be nearly double uh, what their actual salaries are. Recently, the city of Portland was found that a arbitrary thirty-nine percent inflation of their cost of employees was found by a judge, uh, to be excessive. And so in this case, when, uh, it is being charged at about a hundred to a hundred and thirty percent more than the listed rate, it calls, uh, into significant question the county's rate structure on its face. So even if the county was not to provide us consideration of a fee waiver, we believe the, uh, assessed charges at this point are excessive and we are fully prepared to challenge it. Uh, but my interest is, is again, to try to work for an uncollaborative way with the county so we can continue to, to fulfill our fundamental responsibility uh, and helping inform the citizens of Primeville both of a lot of the good that happens in Crook County and ensure that they have an accurate, uh, representation of the actions of their government. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. We'll take that into consideration and review the, uh, minutes and we'll get back to you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Julie Thompson and I live on Green Valley Road and I'm affected by the Knife River Mine. Um, and I just have a couple of simple questions. Um, how many compliance reports does it take to suspend or pull the CUP that they are not following?
It isn't about Julie, it isn't a matter of how many. It's, we are taking your concerns very, very seriously. I wish we could say more, but we can't at this time, but we are definitely trying to do this in a balanced manner because you do have a company, we do have citizens and we are taking everything. And I thank each and every one of you that have sent me a compliance report. I have made sure they were forwarded to the right place. I have printed them out and I have a full basket full. And I, we just were talking this morning about people don't write your things. And I really admire all of you for putting your pen to the paper and sending it to us. So again, we are taking this very, very seriously.
Are there any updates on anything going forward? Like, do we have anything that is reassuring that we might be getting somewhere with this? I mean, we just got our, you know, five hundred and fifty-two page DEQ report, but it's still waiting to be analyzed by the geologist. Um, but it's going to be wash season again. It's not going to be freezing anymore. They're going to start up and our water was worse when they tested it than it has been. So we're worried that it's going to keep getting worse if we can't get something done.
John, you want to answer maybe on this because you've read all that?
Yeah, the neighbor sampling plan just came out. Agencies are talking about it, talking about it with Knife River. Knife River is doing, um, an internal investigation. And so these things are all coming together and, um, kind of doesn't happen overnight, but things are moving.
So they're doing another internal investigation, not a third party testing.
This was, uh, at the, uh, demand of dogamy. And so they go through the process, um, with all the regulations.
John, can you speak into the mic, please?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't learn from the Pee Wee Group. Um, it's, it's pursuant to the game of regulations as far as their internal, um, reports going, but information's being gathered. I know DEQ, um, is, is hoping to do the, another spring sampling report, saying that, that one testing wasn't enough. And so this matter is ongoing and things are happening.
Right, but they need one point four million dollars to do.
No, that's, that's for the federal study.
Hundred, I think it's a hundred thousand for the spring testing. What they're asking for.
Internal funding request to spring testing, basically another round of the neighbor sample plan. The larger federal study requires more money.
But we have nobody that's actually testing Knife River as a third party, testing those wells on their side, correct?
I don't know if the.
It, it was my understanding that DEQ was going to have a third party s- s- study at Knife River. And that was a conversation I had with Greg. Two weeks, two weeks ago. And I, I can't imagine what you guys are going through. I, I totally understand the situation and it never makes anybody happy, but government does not work quickly.
Right.
And state government works even slower than county government. And so we're, we're pushing them every day. I was just in Salem a cou- couple of weeks ago, brought it up to the governor again, you know, thank you for moving these things forward. But, you know, speed is extremely important. These people are not able to use their homes and so, I, I mean, we really are pushing everything we can, but one test does, isn't going to give them the information they need to be able to highlight the issues and, and identify where the issues are coming from.
Right. I get that. It's just, we've all done multiple tests and everything, you know, and it just, it's just time and frustrating.
Can only imagine, yeah.
But also that we're not getting the wash permit pulled when that could be a major reason that our water is bad because the ponds are not lined. They're de-watering into the creek that runs right by all of our house. And we have all these reasons, but they're not following the CUP they were given, but they still have.
And we are taking it very, very seriously, Julie. And again, like Seth, I mean, I understand your frustration. I wish I could wave a magic wand, but we are, uh, uh, we need a big can of WD four. I wish I could wave a magic wand, but we are, uh, uh, we need a big can of W D forty. But we are trying as hard as we can and we do appre- we, I appreciate each and every one of your reports. I appreciate. Your time that you spend here coming and I I'm frustrated to have to give you the answer I have to give you.
Thank you. Any additional comments?
Ashley McCormick, I'm on Green Valley Road. Why with all of our testing that we've been bringing forward for years now? And then the state got involved, the state did testing, that just shows that our water has gotten significantly worse itself. Why is it that there is not some sort of clause in this C U P? That allows you guys to put a pause on things? Why do we have to prove them guilty? When things are already, why is there not some s- some room for just in case when they are in our water? Why are we having to suffer while things get cleared up? Why is there not somewhere that we can just put a slight pause? Not to stop it, nothing permanent, just put a pause until we can get to the bottom of this. Why should our water have to continue to get significantly worse? This affects every aspect of our lives and to ask us to sit here. For years now, while you guys are working on things, I understand there's only so much you can do, but why when you issued the C U P, did you not allow? Or some room error? I mean, we, all these C U P violations, the state testing, our water testing. Why do we have to sit here and suffer while you guys work on paperwork? Why can we not put a pause so that things don't continue to get worse in the meantime?
John, do you wanna answer that? Speak to it.
Um, so obviously the the original C U P was was issued a long time ago. The jurisdictional things are complicated. Um, discussions are being had about the possibility with that with entities that have control over those kinds of things. At the county level, we're also looking at every possible means to make sure that the citizens are protected and uh the water issues don't get worse. Things are happening every day. Um, we don't have an answer. At ten twelve today.
But we're not protected is the problem and. What's the point of a C U P if we as the neighbors, we don't have law degrees, we don't have any of this. It is violation after violation after violation. What's the point of a C U P if they're allowed to just do whatever they want?
Also, I wanna make sure we understand that um issuing co-compliance complaint does not um establish that a violation is happening. These are all being looked into. Um, we're getting responses back. Um, and so just because the complaints file doesn't mean that's a violation. A violation um having to do or a complaint having to do with a tree burn uh doesn't have to do with the water contamination.
It's not just the tree.
I understand, understand. Um. Process is uh there to protect uh aggregate resources are important part of the county, a part of our part of the state. Uh, legislature has made that very clear. Um, there again is a web of jurisdictional frameworks. Um, so it's not, we cannot waive a magic wand. When we think there's an issue and everything goes away. Uh, we are looking at every possible means to make sure that you guys are protected and we are moving fast in that direction.
I think it's also important, I think, and I've I've told you this before and I'm probably tired of hearing it. But these are, these are things at the state level. The C O P, I I mean, I I think John's right. We need to work through that process and that takes time. But when you talk about the quality of the water and and why it, we haven't been able to stop it because of that, it's because state agencies have been. Unwilling or unable to say that there that Knife River is the issue.
And I'm not saying that they are. I'm saying there is something.
Yes.
Wrong.
Yes.
So why not pause it until we can figure that out? I'm not saying that Knife River is responsible because I understand that more testing needs to be done. But either way, my neighbors and I have significantly dangerous water from something.
Sure, but what I'm saying is that that's a state question. It's not a question for the county. When it comes to water quality, we don't have water quality professionals. We aren't, we don't have scientists. And when you have the state come in and say that there isn't an issue, then we are unable to then work unilaterally. Without their. Explanation of of what's going on. And so that's where I know we're the easiest ones to talk to and and have a conversation with. But the state is the one that is gonna make that decision if it is or is not. A uh entity's fault for it happening. And so until they do that, our hands are tied on that side of making a designation of who is in. Who's in charge or what is in charge of of making that problem?
I wanna, I wanna add, Ashley, one thing to you is John Isler has is working very, very hard. For protection of U S citizens and also for protection of, you know, we do have to look at mining's the reason we're sitting in this room. Mining is a very important part, but I wanna commend him on what he has done, where we have come. And again, I I I understand your frustration. I ask you to be patient. I agree with Seth. State has not stepped up the way we possibly hoped, but. Hang in there.
They're still working for you.
Yeah, we are working for you.
Does the state have control over the C U P or does the county have control over this?
No, that that's a separate issue.
Yes.
But I think the what John's saying is the things that have been brought forward, just because you claim there's an issue, doesn't mean that that means. We've gotta go through the process of researching that. Correct me if I'm wrong here, John. And and but in until we do that and then through the land use process, just because you screw up. A conditional use doesn't mean automatically you can just say this is done. We, that's where you gotta work through the process and find the specific things and. Different. Levels of of. Problems and what those problems then can. The outcomes that those problems can cause. Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah, it's pretty accurate.
Thank you too, Julie.
Any more comments? Anything else? Well, that concludes this. We'll go into executive session.
A motion chip for the public part of this? You need a motion to it, Jim?
We're not a jumping, going into executive session.
Okay.
The Crook County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session. Can we have it quiet, please, as you're leaving? The Crook County Board of Commissioners will now meet in executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero two H. Consulting with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And O R S one nine two six six zero two A to consider the employment of a public officer. Employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decisions may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome back the audience into the room.
So, uh, Brian, did you also read that? Did you also read that for the executive session for two D representatives, news media are not allowed to attend? Oh, we're not doing it, okay.
Right.
Excellent.
The Crook County Board of Commissioners will now leave executive session under O R S one nine two six six zero two H. Consulting with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. And O R S one nine two six six zero two A to consider the employment of a public officer. Uh, employee, staff member, or individual agent. Representatives of the news media and designated staff were allowed to attend executive session. All other members of the audience were asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media were specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session. Except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision was made in the executive session. We will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room.
Commissioners for the the two H items, there's uh no motion needed, I would say, on the two A motion to direct staff to proceed. As instructed in executive session.
Still moved.
Second. Was it been made in second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Hermric, aye.
Seth, aye.
Brian, aye.
I do have a quick question. Are we going to uh tell the public that we have hired a secondary? Or another set of eyes or is that still going to be kept? Way we are. Well, because we just directed staff, so that is now is a motion or whatever. I'm just.
I don't see, I mean, once we have one, um.
We'll go.
In a contract, I don't see why we would try to withhold that.
Yes, I should, I should have asked that before, because now I'm not in an executive session. I'm in public, so I blew it.
Um, so the last item that I forgot to bring up, um. So Matt brought from Knife River reached out. They wanna come um present the results from their studies and and talk to you guys. Uh, they said that they um, I think it was March fifth and March seventh will be in town. Um, and so March fifth, we have a meeting and I I wanted to see if you guys wanted to do that as part of our meeting. I think they said they would uh be available in the afternoon, but I could see if they can come earlier or we could do one of those continuances where we then have the topic. Later on in the day, part of the same meeting, or we can do a sep- separate special meeting. Uh, but they wanna come present to you, I imagine the public would have some questions as well.
And I I think it's important myself that when that happens that we have the new folks online. So I'll have to coordinate with them.
And I would also, we might wanna look at a different venue. If we were to do that. To have a larger location, just in case, we don't wanna.
So as.
Pull something like other just areas in the community where they have a real small room and not everybody can be part of it. I mean, I I guess we can kind of feel the temperature. If we're not getting a ton of calls, then we can probably do it in here. But if we s- start seeing a ton of interest, I think we definitely wanna put it somewhere where people can comfortably sit down and be a part of it. That all being said, uh, I'm gonna be back in D C on the fifth, so I would not be able to be there for that. Um.
What about the, what about the seventh? Oh, that's it. That's a Friday. Do a special meeting.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have anything right now on that date. Um, I think it might also be worthwhile doing an evening meeting on something like that. And allow ensuring that people aren't at work and that they have the the ability to be. A- as many people as possible could be here to be part of that conversation because I think that's extremely important. And I feel like there'll be quite a bit of unhappy people if if we were to hold that in a time that not everyone could be there.
And maybe it can't be at their convenience, maybe.
Yeah, maybe they need.
Maybe it needs to be at our convenience, which, I mean, you know, because you're looking on the seventh as a Friday. If you do it at night.
Friday night.
Are people gonna wanna come on a Friday night? I'm not sure. Other people can have as dull a life as I do and we'd be fine, but like I say, maybe we just need to do it at. The convenience that we have and if we do want to have other representatives there. Then we do need to let them have the time to get up to speed.
Yeah.
I I think that they need to realize and I'm sure that they probably do that it's just not gonna become. Them showing up and giving their conversation and giving us information and not being hammered from the people that are in the neighborhood. With questions.
And what is?
I don't believe that we can just let them have a conversation and not let the public.
I wanna make sure it's not uh, it doesn't turn into like a pseudo land use hearing.
And that, and that's a problem, John, and I don't know how it's not going to. Because you, again, there's a lot of passion here.
Yeah.
And you are going to have, so I'm not sure how that works.
I I think there's a path for, there's not a pending land use application right now. I think um it's it's appropriate for information to be provided. Like you have received from the state, like you've heard from the neighbors, but I would recommend that we don't schedule this until we have outside counsel retained.
That's a good idea. So um I'm gonna stand, we're looking into dates.
And maybe, maybe even say we'll provide you with some dates that work for us.
Yeah.
I mean, I think they can travel here on another day. That's not, uh, you know, but yeah. I think we just have to think and we have to think, and maybe we need to think about later in March, which gives us a little bit more time to get up to speed. And then if we wanna think about another avenue of where we could hold the meeting, I guess that might be. I don't thi- I think you're gonna be fine with this room, but. That was just going through planning. You don't know how many outside people now. You know, you have a core of people and that would be fine here, but how many outside people now are involved in this? That's the part I don't know yet.
Yeah, I I don't have a good concept. I just think we need to be thoughtful.
So we need to throw, we need to throw out some different places.
We might wanna see if we can invite, I mean, trying to keep it from being a land use hearing, but see if we can invite D E Q and Dagami as well, have a representative there.
Yeah, and then I don't know what limitations. We'll have to check with Sarah because we have to do this Zoom. So we have to figure out, like, can we go to Carrie Foster Hall?
Yeah.
And do a Zoom meeting that's all in our communications and I know that's a burden on you, but I sure don't know how to do any of that stuff.
Yeah, John's always is like the. He's good at getting that set up.
Clover, Clover building worked recently well.
And that's it. And that's what I never thought about, but that's a really good idea.
Good one.
Yeah.
Or the high school. I mean, they do school board meetings out of the high school, so they must have.
Okay, maybe the high school would be more at least warm.
Yeah, it's a little chilly, a little chilly in that Clover building. By March, it'll be too warm.
All right, so we can, we can uh.
Okay.
Follow up on it.
Yeah, I'll reach out to them, let them know that those dates probably don't work for us, but I'll I'll get back to them soon and.
You might wanna reach out to them that if we do this, that we do want to do this in a public, it would be a public meeting. So that they have a sense of what they be facing and they may decide to rescind that invitation. We don't know, you know. They're coming and wanting to have a conversation with us. What is us to them? We don't know.
Us is.
Well, I I I I get that, but I'm just saying, I think we need to clarify who us is. In my opinion, just so they are aware.
Yeah.
I think that would be a a us better move, you know, that this is the way we wanna do it. Are they still, you know, interested? And then we could work from there.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Hermric, aye.
Seth, aye.
Brian, aye.
Okay.